Good evening and welcome to the June 23, 2014 Hillsborough Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, was provided on June 18, 2014 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Dada?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Pulcifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay. I am going to read a motion for going into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act of Chapter, Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: A, the matters to be discussed are personnel matter and the evaluation and contract of the superintendent of schools; B, the matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Like to entertain a motion to go to executive session.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Lorraine and Dana? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We're going to executive session. We'll be back at 7:30. Okay, we're back from closed session. Again, thank you and welcome to the June 23, 2014 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud?
Surely, Mr. Kent. Ms. Bogushevsky? Okay. Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Dada?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Pulcifer? Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Lost a couple.
We did.
They'll be back. If we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have correspondence as is listed in the agenda. And now I'll hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I am very happy to share some wonderful news with the board and with the community this evening. Of the 1,100 Somerset Valley YMCA Hillsborough Hop Runners at the annual May 31 5K Run, 429 of those runners were Hillsborough School students. That's one-third of the total participants, many of our students placed within their age group. Two years ago, the Y initiated the Hoppy Award to recognize Hillsborough School that had the highest participation rate in the 5K Run. ARRIS won this inaugural award with HES winning last year. This year, ARRIS reclaimed the title with 11.34% of its student body participating, just edging out Woodford Elementary School. Board members Tom Kent, Greg Gillette, and Lorraine Wasson, as well as numerous Hillsborough district staff participated with their family. Congratulations to all the Hillsborough runners on this fun, healthy family event. During the Alton Road Intermediate School 6th Grade Honors and Jazz Band Concert held on Wednesday, May 21, student percussionist Ikka Tao was presented with the Gary T. Smith Outstanding Musicianship Award. Tao was awarded, was chosen to receive this award based not only on her musical talent, but also on her cooperative spirit when it comes to working with members of the percussion section and the entire honors band. Other students recognized as award nominees were George Hart on trumpet, Gabriel Diaz on flute, Andrew Rigel on tuba, and Caitlin Dundorf on alto saxophone. Let's give a big round of applause to all of the ARRIS students. On June 19, Hillsborough High School student Alexander Louie received the Congressional Award Gold Medal. Alexander was one of 15 students from New Jersey to receive the 2014 award. The Congressional Gold Medal is Congress's highest award for students ages 24 to 23. The medal recognizes individuals that have committed hundreds of hours to community service and involvement. Congratulations, Alexander, and thank you for your commitment to helping others. District students athletes have been practicing and playing hard all year long. I am honored to share some of the team results with you this evening. Varsity Girls Softball and Varsity Girls Spring Track both captured the Central Jersey Group 4 State Championships. Let's give them a big hand. Somerset County Champion Teams from Hillsborough included baseball, softball, girls' spring track relays, boys' basketball, boys' swimming, girls' swimming, girls' winter track, boys' cross country, and girls' cross country. The volleyball, the boys' volleyball team is the Skyland Cup Champions. Let's pause and recognize all of those athletes. Skyland Conference Champions from Hillsborough are softball, girls' track in the Delaware Division, boys' volleyball, boys' swimming, boys' cross country, and girls' cross country. Let's give them a big round of applause. The girls' middle school softball team also captured the Central Jersey Girls Softball Association Championship. Congratulations to our middle school softball team as well. The Hillsborough High School Swim Team has had not only an amazing year in the pool, but really gave the new meaning to the words scholar athlete, and we have many of them in the audience tonight. And Kaz, if you don't mind, I'm going to be asking you to kind of pan around as we recognize our student swimmers. I want to take a few minutes to recognize some of the amazing team and personal accomplishments. I know that we have a few team members here, so when we recognize you, please stand. Each year, the National Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association recognizes teams that achieve high academic standards. These awards are based upon an average cumulative GPA of an entire varsity team of 12 or more athletes. This year, our boys' swim team was awarded the Silver Scholar Award with an overall GPA of 3.742. Boys, please stand up and be recognized at this time. Thank you. Our girls' team was awarded the Gold Scholar Award with an overall GPA of 3.84, 3.846 GPA. Phenomenal. Girls, please stand at this time to be recognized. Now for some individual awards. Senior swimmer Lindsay Temple was awarded the Academic All-American Award. To qualify for this honor, a student must have a minimum GPA of 3.75 on a 4.0 scale, be a graduating senior, have attended in the high school swim program during your senior year, earned an All-American time during the current season. And All-American swimmers are those who have had a top 100 time in the entire country. Let's give Lindsay Temple a big round of applause for being Academic All-American. Great job, Lindsay. We also have several All-Americans on this year's swim team. The Girls 200 Medley Relay made up of Lindsay Temple, Emma Collenstein, Julie M. Parker, and Megan Bull. If you stand up at this point now and be recognized for your All-American Girls 200 Medley Relay. Your friends are with you in spirit, I'm sure. Girls 200 Free Relay made up of Juliana Parker, Deborah Stoddard, Megan Bull, and Lindsay Temple. Please stand at this time again. The Girls 400 Free Relay made up of Juliana Parker, Stephanie Marr, Megan Bull, and Lindsay Temple. Please stand again. We're giving you a workout, Lindsay, I know. Juliana Parker for the 100 Fly. I'm not sure if she's here today, but congratulations, Juliana, for her All-American time in the 100 Fly. Lindsay Temple for 100 Back, All-American time. Brad Zadrug for both 50 Free and 100 Free. He's not here this evening, but we congratulate him as well. I also want to recognize two phenomenal coaches who have led this team, truly an extraordinary effort. Todd Soodle, the head coach, and Adelle Morgan. Please stand at this time. We thank you so much for your efforts and congratulations on this year's wins, both team-wise as well as individually. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce a person who I am recommending this evening to be our new Director of Special Education. Kathryn Warlick comes to us from, if you wouldn't mind standing up to be recognized. Kathryn Warlick comes to us from Springfield where she was the supervisor of special education, also an LDTC from there. She's worked in both public and private schools and had an opportunity to meet the board prior to this meeting in executive session. And we welcome her, but before we do, we're going to need a vote from the board, and I ask for unanimous consent to bring forward motion B-12.1 for the board's consideration.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B-12.1 of the agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Warlick.
Welcome aboard.
I ask the board for a brief five-minute recess so that the board can congratulate Ms. Warlick as well as all of our student athletes who are here tonight.
We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Okay, we're back from recess. Continuing on with the superintendent's report, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I just wish to recognize that on Wednesday, we celebrated the graduation of the class of 2014. It's our first year at the Sun Arena, and what struck me not only about all of these students who spent so many years with us learning and growing was that we also had about twice as many people that would typically come to our graduation, which to me indicates that there has been for many years a great demand to bring other family, relatives, friends to participate in this milestone event. I wish to say thank you to the leadership team over at the high school, Ms. Binger, and all of the vice principals that helped to make sure that all of the logistics were taken care of so well. I'd like to thank our board president as well as all of the student speakers for doing a phenomenal job. Mostly, I want to thank our graduates for the work that they did and how they made us very proud. Congratulations graduating class of 2014.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Continuing on with the agenda, we will go to the approval of minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the June 9, 2014 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll wait first off. Any discussions?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions?
Dana.
Dana Bogushevsky.
Chris.
And you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the June 9, 2014 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Got it. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstentions?
Got it.
Three and Dana.
And Dana.
As well.
Gotcha. Motion passes.
Okay, motion. Okay. Continuing on with the agenda, committee reports. Now that we had an education committee and a human resources committee. Education committee?
Okay.
Mrs. Haas?
Okay. The education committee was actually very ambitious. We had two meetings already in the month of June. At the first one, we had a telephone conference at which we approved moving forward with the purchase of Acer touchscreens at a cost within the 2014-15 budget. So we were very happy about how the bids came in on those that enabled us to do that. At our June 17 meeting, we approved two textbooks, one for a new class on nutrition and wellness for life, a high school elective, and also a new textbook for earth science for grade 12. We also approved unanimously the curriculum for the new class Nutrition Healthy Choices, which is a really good class, and if any students are actually listening to this meeting, which I doubt, think about taking it because it's a really good class. Anyway, we had a discussion of a proposal for the Odyssey of the Mind Program, which was brought to us by our social studies supervisor. And apparently, this program has been happening on voluntary basis with a variety of students getting a lot out of it. So we're going to move forward with the program as it's currently run by parent volunteers, and we're going to consider a formal proposal in the fall so that we could make a decision as to whether or not to include it in the budget process. We also had a strategic plan update, and Dr. Antunes and Mr. Handler gave us a very detailed outline for the rollout of the Chromebooks for grade 5 through 12. Three areas that we discussed were logistics, professional development/training, and communication. We also had some new discussion items, including, once again, possibly opening up our calendar, discussing this year's graduation. And also, there had been some parental concern about CP summer reading in the high school, and we're going to update that since that's been done. I guess there is now an update about that on the website. And an instant alert has been sent out to parents about the new requirements. And thank you very much for that, because people were, people were really upset. Anyway, we also discussed that administration should provide criteria regarding requirements on how students are placed in advanced classes when moving from ARRIS to HMS and HMS to HHS. And that will be discussed at a future committee meeting of the education committee. And we also had some discussion about future subjects that we were going to be discussing at the education committee, hopefully over the summer, with reports on the STEM program, the world language implementation, and the double period of algebra. So that's about it for the education committee. We've been busy.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Human Resources, Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes, the Human Resources Committee meeting actually was held before our previous board meeting, but we've not had a chance to report out on that. Dr. Schiff brought us up to speed on a grievance that is working its way through the system just to give us a heads up as to what might make it to the board, although it has not yet. We discussed, also discussed some suspensions of staff that are being processed by the administration. We then discussed the superintendent's evaluation. We reviewed the goals, and we also reviewed the backup material that shows the meeting of the goals that Dr. Schiff had for this year. We also discussed the, let's see, salaries and benefits for non-aligned staff, and that was it for our meeting that evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. Operations, Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. President. The operations committee met June 11. We had five or six items on the agenda, well, it was six, but the transportation policy that we, is continuing discussion. We're going to discuss that again later in the summer. We also had discussion about the integrated preschool transportation. And although we will not be offering transportation to the integrated preschool students who attend via the lottery for the 2014-15 year, that is, that is not prohibited by any regulation or practice or policy, and we're going to be in discussion about reinstituting that for the subsequent year, 2015-16. If you have a question about that, why we decide that, I can answer that, but I'll wait for questions. We also had agenda item about the use of our facilities for before care and after care as I reported at a previous board meeting. We, operations committee had discussed operating our before care and after care just a different way. So to that end, Mr. Mahmud and his team put out what I would call a sort of an exploratory RFQ sent to all the different potential providers of before care and after care services at our elementary schools and at ARRIS. We got a couple of responses back, and the responses were in the form of, what would you pay us to run this program? In other words, how, what would you pay sort of in rent for the facility fee to run the program? What would your fees be to the students? In other words, we're looking if they would be comparable to what parents pay now. And we had two responses. They were, one of them was quite favorable, but it's not something that can be implemented for this upcoming school year because it's too soon and people, they, oh, the other, the providers now have already sent out information to parents and they've already signed up.
Booked, right.
But the quotes that we got would still be good for 2015-16, pending any other thing happening. It would still be good, and we can, we're going to keep this on the table to explore for the 2015-16 year. As we reported previously, our ESIP financing aspect of the ESIP program came in very favorably. The interest rates were below what we had budgeted, and it's going to provide in the beginning years some positive cash flow for the district, which would be good. We also discussed the leasing of the transportation and maintenance vehicles. This was all cut and dry. And our final discussion item, we had a nice vigorous discussion about central office personnel positions, and we discussed doing a study, an analysis of, what would you call, like a needs and efficiency analysis, covering everything, needs and efficiency and compensation, I guess, analysis, the whole works, and having somebody, an expert in that do that. And I think by the general consensus of the committee that we agree that we are going to go ahead with that, and I think Mr. Mahmud or Dr. Schiff will have a-
Well, we would provide a proposal.
Provide a proposal, yeah. That we're not, we gave them the go-ahead to look at it, look at who we would hire to do something like that, so they're going to provide that proposal to us. That's all we had, and then we were out pretty early. Only about 90 minutes, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Jen Haley, the chairperson for the governance committee, is here, so I'll just cover that. The governance committee met on June 17. Topics that were discussed were, one was, there was a community member questioned how we provide correspondence in the agenda and the meeting minutes. For clarification, we just directed that subjects should be provided, and it should be done so in a non-evaluative, non-evaluative, neutral manner. A number of policies were reviewed, some of which are on the agenda for first reading. A couple others have gone back to get clarification from Strauss Esment, who's our provider. We had an update on the status of the superintendent's evaluation, which is a board activity that's facilitated through the NJSBA. We had an update on the board self-evaluation, which is one of the responsibilities for the board, is to provide an annual self-assessment, and there's a means and a tool that the NJSBA, the New Jersey School Boards Association, provides. So we're in the process of doing that. We also talked about having a board retreat, which we will do over two evenings in the month of July, and we will be discussing the board evaluation, self-evaluation, board goals, framing up district goals, and also potentially talking about planning for revising the strategic plan as that comes to its fruition. And I think that was it. That was it. Any questions or discussion on the committee reports? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to open the floor to the public for new business or items on the action agenda. Name and address, please. Mr. Zabeli?
Thomas Zabeli.
Zabeli, sorry.
That's okay. Thomas Zabeli, 9 Upper Neshanet Court. I actually had outlined in my head three things I wanted to speak about, but now I have four, but I'll make them quick, okay? First things first, I again stand here, I know that school year has ended, but I stand here in great opposition to the idea of Common Core as well as the idea of universal pre-K. I think they're both silly ideas. I don't think the federal government needs to mandate ideas or principles from the federal government and then institute them at the state level or local levels, and I don't think universal pre-K, I think it's more like babysitting. Second point is, I'd like, I don't know, again, the school year has completed, but I'd like to see somehow to get a better, fairer funding formula because with all the issues with the state pension and all these other issues at the state level and whatnot, and the fact that we aren't, we are getting the short end of the stick, and we're going to have problems again if we don't start seeing a fairer funding formula for this district and many others like ours. So I'd like to see us somehow move in that direction. I don't know, you know, but that's just, and point, point number three, I was wondering, and this is a, my last two points will regard a question, an answer from the board, whomever wants to answer. Is there an idea in the budget for the following year to bus the students to, if we're doing at the same venue for the graduation that we did this year, is there monies in the budget for busing to the location? And if not, is there a possibility maybe getting rid of courtesy busing to pay for it? Just a suggestion, and again, I'd like to know, having a response from the board. And my last question has to do with the retreat. Just popped into my head. Will you all be paying for your, paying yourselves to go to the retreat, or is that going to come out of?
It's not going to be like that.
Sure, I'll talk to a couple. Thanks for your feedback on the earlier issues. As you know, a lot of them are statutes, law, and federal law that we don't have any control over. With regard to the busing, thank you for your feedback for that. I do know that Dr. Schiff and his team are going to be doing an after-action report assessment, what could be done to improve, do differently for the following year. So the feedback that you have for busing or courtesy busing, I believe that we've heard that. And then with regard to the retreat, it's, the name is much more glorified than what we actually do. Typically, just meet in a library or a conference room.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm thinking of what went on with the GAO and the government agencies.
There may have been a, you know, a different time in a different place, not here and not with us.
No champagne in the hot tub, unfortunately.
Okay. And just quickly to go back to the third point I had made about the courtesy busing, again, I don't know if I made it clear, again, I don't, I guess separately, along the same lines, is there a movement to get rid of courtesy busing, period, besides taking, you know, taking the money as I suggested and putting it towards the cost to bus the students to graduation, but is there a shift to get rid of courtesy busing altogether? I don't see the need for it.
Oh, from, you mean for the district in general?
Yes, for the district in general, and also with graduation, taking that money and then putting it towards that.
So the graduation, as I recently explained, that's going to be part of the assessment, and they'll take that into consideration. No promises are being made.
Sure.
With regard to transportation for the district?
Yes.
We have a large district, and really, the number of people who can, who don't need to be bused is actually relatively small based on the criteria that are there. And we feel it's one of the values that the board has is to, is to make sure that when we transport kids to schools that it's done in an efficient and safe manner, and we found that the busing, which is contracted out, it's not with our home fleet, we find that to be an effective and efficient manner for doing so.
Okay. Thank you for all your questions, and thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Zabeli. Zabeli.
Hi. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jean Trujillo. I live at 5 Eric Court in Hillsborough. I live at five Eric Court in Hillsborough. I was here actually at the last board meeting to speak about Mr. Timothy Hoy, but I understand that you are not able to speak about personnel issues. So my question to the board tonight is, I'd like to understand what the process is that you follow when you're presented with an employee's resignation when they are in a tenure-eligible year? Do you have a discussion when you're presented with that?
Our process is guided by state statute as well as by the standards that we set as a district. The Teach-N-J Act requires that all public school systems in the state of New Jersey apply, apply a research-based teacher evaluation model. The Department of Education pre-approves a full list that districts are free to choose from. We have exercised that, that, that flexibility and have chosen the strong teacher evaluation model, S-T-R-O-N-G-E, named after Dr. Strong. There, there are other models that are available, but this is a research-based, pre-approved teacher evaluation process. We have within our school system a process where someone who is about to receive tenure must be recommended to me, and I will recommend to the board only those that we are enthusiastic about and that we recommend without hesitation or reservation. And the reason we set that high standard is that tenure in the state of New Jersey is a job protection. So we want to be able to attract and keep and certainly recommend to the school board only the very finest teachers that we can find in the state of New Jersey or hopefully in the country. That's our standard. Frankly, not all school districts have that standard, but it was a standard that the board did accept upon my hire, and it's what we intend to keep.
So I have a question. I understand, we had talked before, year two, the standard is, what is the likelihood that this person can be recommended for tenure? If the person is rehired after year two, so they're in now year three, it seems to me that they have a pretty good chance, it's, it's not guaranteed, but it's a pretty good chance. Would you agree that they would get tenure?
That, that's correct. The standard, the year prior to tenure is that there is a likelihood that that person could achieve tenure.
So I don't know if this is a public record thing that we can get this information. I would like to know how many teachers who were recommended for, for, from year two to year three that are actually in year three, how many of those teachers get tenure after year three? You know, just, I, I remember you said that twenty to twenty-five teachers district-wide get tenure. I'm curious to know, is that out of thirty? Is it out of a hundred?
I would say it's, it's a significant majority.
It's a significant majority. So to the board, I have a question. This is just in general terms, although I am motivated by a specific individual. As you can see from the board agenda, you've received over twenty letters. In last meeting's agenda, it was regarding a Woods Road staff member. Now it's regarding just a staff member, but I have copies of all these letters, so I know it's about the same person. How do you reconcile the discrepancy when you receive parental letters supporting a teacher who the administration, just by, by the definition, is not enthusiastic about? It's just to me, that seems unfair. It's, I feel like the, the public, how, can the public be ensured that that teacher was fairly evaluated?
I'll let Mr. Kinsay answer that question directly, but I would suggest to you as well as suggest to the audience that the personnel process is private by law and you elect officials to represent your interests. And those officials sit at this day is. And as appropriately elected officials to a school board, they are privy to information that the public is not privy to.
From a, from a board's perspective, as Dr. Schiff had mentioned, a tenure decision, a recommendation for tenure is a very long-term choice and commitment that the district makes. So as a board, we're committed to bringing in and, and recommend, and having recommended for tenure only the most excellent teachers that are available because it is such a, a long-term impact to the district. So we have a very high standard in terms of, of who gets recommended for tenure because of, because of the impact that it's going to have for the, for the district throughout the entire time that that, that, that teacher is with the district. With regard to the comments on feedback from parents, we've read each and every one of those, but there is information beyond just parent testimonials in terms of how they perceive the, a teacher performs and, and how well they teach the entire class. So there are, as, there are other aspects in terms of a recommendation or, or not, not having, being, not being presented with a recommendation to, to renew. From a board perspective, we act in a positive manner, so we act on the, those who are recommended for approval or renewal. It would, we would have to, A, be aware of those who are not recommended for renewal. We would need to know all the circumstances and then we would have to act in a manner that overrides the recommendation of the superintendent and his staff. And as, as Dr. Schiff mentioned, the process is that at the local level, the, the school leader position, that person makes a recommendation and who then to the, to the superintendent and then based on the process and the, the models and the assessments, then makes a recommendation for the board in a positive manner.
Thank you for that information. I have read a lot about the law and I understand that the superintendent's job, the administration's job, is to run the district. The board is merely to oversee, you know, the actions of the administration. I guess as a, as a citizen of community, of this community, I'm concerned that we're bringing in young people to become teachers, to spend three years with our children, you know, they dedicate day in, day out to our children, and then, well, you weren't that excellent, you know, but you were, I mean, you weren't that excellent, but you would get the next person. I, I just feel like we're cycling through young people and it's just not fair. I, I really, I, I feel that the board, I, I hope the board would look into, are we trying to become like the Princeton University or the Harvard that we're only selecting the seven percent of the admission, you know, the applicants? I just feel like that's, it's really not fair to the young people who have dedicated their lives to our children. Thank you.
My name is Chris Carlson. I live at two oh two Foster Street. Dr. Schiff, members of the Board of Education. Hello, my name is Chris Carlson and my family and I live at two oh two Foster Street. Our twins, Lindsay and Logan, just completed first grade at Woodfern and will be entering into second grade in the fall. I am here tonight to go on the record as respectively requesting four teachers for the second grade for the 2014-2015 academic year. It is well-established and readily, readily acknowledged by all of you and the entire educational committee that small class size is, is key to successful education. In this case, going from eighteen children in a classroom to at least twenty-four children will have a significantly detrimental impact on my two children. I understand that there is concern over funding for the fourth teachers. This concern is misplaced. Twenty-eight teachers recently retired with over six hundred years of teaching experience. The difference between what a long-term district teacher makes and the salary of a new replacement teacher is called breakage. This breakage is solution for the concern. Further, regardless of the money issue, if four more students enter Woodfern this summer, you would be required to hire a fourth teacher and would have to find the money to pay for such a teacher regardless. In addition, we have recently learned that there will only be three sections for the first grade at Woodfern as nineteen kindergartners will be attending transitional primary next year. And thus, funding issue is moot as the budget already accounted for the fourth first-grade teacher who can now be allotted, allocated to second grade. Ultimately, we can all agree that the reason why we are all here, why you have your position, Dr. Schiff, and why the distinguished members of the Board of Education have their roles is because the desire to educate our young children and to provide them a free and appropriate education. Everyone agrees that the smaller class sizes are appropriate and the money already exists to cover the corresponding expenses. Taking the position that my two children deserve less attention, more classroom distraction, and less education merely due to the lack of four additional stu, children at Woodfern is simply not appropriate. The numbers game is just that, a game and has no place in providing a free and appropriate education. I urge you to consider this issue further and to allocate another teacher to the Woodfern grade.
Hi, my name is Ed Yarshinsky and this is my wife Susan. We live at three three eight East Mountain Road in Hillsborough, and we are here tonight concerning the decision to create three sections in second grade at Woodfern next year instead of four. There was not a quorum at the last Board of Ed meeting, but my questions and concerns were addressed, and I believe that I have an understanding of the procedure that led to the decision to have three sections for second grade at Woodfern. If I had been aware of the procedure that determines maximum class size in the elementary school, specifically a class size maximum of twenty-five in second grade, and had I been aware of the possibility that there would be three sections of second graders at Woodfern, I would have attended the board meetings before the budget was approved. But the procedure is not very transparent. I understand enrollments change, this can't be foreseen, but second, third, and fourth graders are formative years for our children. Smaller class sizes are preferred and are a necessity. I am asking the board to please reconsider its procedure of setting a maximum class size of twenty-five in grades two, three, and four. Take another look at the procedure and take another look at the budget and find a way to make the maximum class size twenty-two in second grade in each elementary school. I am asking the board to provide our children with smaller, better class size in elementary schools. Budgetary considerations should not impact the education of our children at the lower grade levels where it has the most impact. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Justin Drab and I, like a lot of the parents here, I have a, a first grader and he's also in Woodfern. And I'm sure you've heard a lot of passionate parents about, or talk to you about their concerns, and all I wanted to do before I got here, as, as I was hearing all these concerns, was just do some research. So I did some, some searching on student-to-teacher ratio, and as you probably know, there's thousands of documents on the student, the academic achievement results in relation to the number of, or the size of classes. So I wanted to kind of focus on K through three because some of the, a lot of the experts that I talked to, former teachers and teachers who are in this town, they, you know, they talk about how critical it is with, in terms of class size and kids at that critical age. So I did a lot of research and I, I found a few documents and a couple of case studies and one in particular that I'm just going to quickly talk about, it's called the STAR experiment. And over twenty-five years, they've researched the class sizes and in particular, the class sizes of K through three. And in, in this case, it says the STAR experiment has shown that attending small classes in early grades K through three is accompanied by long-term advantages, including taking college entrance examinations, graduating from high school, taking advanced coursework in high school, and of course, the academic, the academic achievements. Okay, so I'm going through and I'm looking at all this and I'm wondering, I said, and I'm, and I'm thinking that, that this is that one decision that I think is, that kind of hits home with, I'm sure why you guys are up there on the Board of Education, you know what I mean? This is that one decision where you say, you know what, not on my watch, okay? This is not the kind of decision where I'm going to have these long-term effects, okay, with these kids. Now, there were some arguments against, against these, but I found one article with a school district that was in Denver where they were, where instead of class size, a lot of the education experts, they, they focused on teacher effectiveness and the quality of teaching and as, as opposed to the, the class size that makes a difference. But at that, in that Colorado town, when they were making this argument at this similar Board of Education type, they didn't even consider K through two, actually, through that town. They were, they were debating class size through, for the older kids. Because they, they've actually conceded of the long-term effects or the effects of class size with kids K through three. So I also urge you to reconsider this and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Flouette. I live at seven sixty Clausen Avenue. I moved to Hillsborough about six years ago and I left another area in the state. And one of the reasons why we moved here was because of the great school system. I've been extremely happy with the high school for my older son and, and really very, very pleased with my son John's teachers at Woodfern. I just want to say that, you know, Hillsborough is an affluent town and there's just beautiful homes being built up all around. All of us make sacrifices for our children's future, and I don't believe that our children need to make sacrifices for us, especially in such a wealthy area. And I'd like the board to consider bringing the cap for the class sizes back to twenty-two students per classroom. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gwen Durlik. I'm at seven sixty-three Amel Road in Hillsborough. I too am here to speak on behalf of the cap, of the twenty-two students at the second grade level at the elementary level. Much like my predecessors have mentioned before, there are other studies on teacher effectiveness also related to student data and ensuring that the ASH scores when they are starting to take place at this formative stage is a critical time to maintain the level of student-to-teacher ratio as low as possible. With regard to finding the funding, that seemed to be a concern of the remaining board members who were here after the board broke due to the issue of the quorum. Certainly, we saw plenty of fine educators who had retired and in that breakage, there could be an educator found. From what I understand as well, the first grade is going from four classrooms down to three, so perhaps that is another solution to this concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmella Batolia. I live at five O'Neill Court, and I gave a formal statement last time about Woodfern Elementary School's second grade class size. And tonight, I just want to say I concur with everything that has been said before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Chekowitz. I live at six White Circle. I also am here as a concerned parent of a child going into second grade in Woodfern. And to echo what some of the prior statements I've said about the research that has been done, this is nothing new. Everyone knows about the research that's out there in regards to the student-to-teacher ratio. It goes back thirty years. Every single study that's out there always focuses on K through three as, as that primary age of, of where the ratio is most important. And Dr. Schiff, an email dated June ninth, you graciously responded to all the parents that had sent you an email up to that date, and you had mentioned that K through one had a certain ratio and then two through four had a separate ratio. So similar to everybody else, I would just want to make sure that we're focusing on K through three as that primary area to adjust the ratio. And if you're, we know what the solution is, it's been discussed already. If you talk about sort of the step back and look at the larger, big picture here from a societal benefit, studies have shown that for every two dollars, for every dollar you spend on this, it returns two dollars in later life to those students. So please consider our pleas and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Darren Smith. I'm here on behalf of myself as well as my wife Laura Lambert. I'm not going to beat a dead horse here. I'm here for the same reason everybody else is. Dr. Schiff, you were kind enough to reply to my wife's emails. We certainly thank you for that. We're in strong opposition of condensing the four classes into three. We have a fairly gifted child and almost all studies suggest that the single most attributable, attributable factor to student success is the class size. Currently, there's little to no opportunities for gifted kids to be educated at their instructional level in most subjects at the lower elementary school level, and increasing the class size will only make this an even bigger challenge. If, if the district is committed to providing superior education, it'll maintain the four classes instead of three. Cutting second grade to three classes will impact the gifted students as well as the challenged ones. Thank you.
Thank you. So first off, I want to thank everybody who's, who came back. First, for your flexibility from last meeting with the quorum issues, and I contributed to that, apologize for that. But then also for your commitment for coming back and speaking to us again, a larger group, and then also on the official record. And now I'd like to have Dr. Schiff address some of your concerns.
I spoke about process the last time and just to reiterate and share with the public also, we set a class size max at different grade levels and the, the budget development process depends upon that because we just don't look at- process depends upon that, because we just don't look at one school. We apply our class size max to all schools. And we, we freeze the enrollment, or we just take a snapshot of the enrollment at August 1st of the year prior to that next school year, to do our staffing at that point. We predict what our staffing is going to be almost 10 months prior to that time, as we begin the budget development process. The history in this district had been K through two being at 22 kids as the class size max. That changed, I think it was the 10-11 school year, when there was a significant reduction in state aid and difficult decisions needed to be made, and teachers were reduced at that point in time. Our state aid hasn't increased significantly since that particular point. That's difficult to, to develop a budget when your costs that are not in your control are increasing well above the flat state aid that we, that we have gotten for the past three years. So that's very disconcerting. If we actually compare our state aid to what it was the year prior, the nine, 10 school year, we're still not at that level. So there are issues that we're wrestling with, not only in Hillsborough, but across the state of New Jersey, where our revenues are not matching the expenditures, and we're having a difficult time being able to do all of the different things that we wish to do as a district. Now getting back to process, during the budget development time, we predict what our expenses are going to be based upon the rules that are set at the time that we developed the budget. Those rules currently are K through one, 22 would be the class size max, and then for grades two through four, 25 is the class size max. That means that it's most likely that we would have sections collapse, that would be between the time when we had 22 as the max and 25 as the max, and that's second grade currently in the district. Right now, if we changed our process and said that our class size max would return to 22, that means we would need to apply that across the district. And there are currently four schools in our district that the average class size is above 22, which means we would have to open up another section. So if the Board wishes to do it, that means that we would need to find the funding of four additional positions, not just the, the one position at Woodfern. We wouldn't open up a section just at Woodfern and change the rules just for Woodfern. We would do that across, across the entire district. It is much easier and, and probably more productive to have those conversations in October and November as we're developing our budget into the next school year. Then that class size can be part of the priority setting as we move into the subsequent school year. Now to do it, we would have to, well, you know, there's other priorities that the Board has already put into place, and our expenditures are set for next year. That doesn't mean that the Board can't change their mind, but I'm just telling you what, what the process is and where we are currently.
Thank you.
Okay, if I may, what, Ed Yarshinsky? What we are asking is for the Board to not take budgetary considerations into hand, right? I understand what you're saying, but what we're saying is, please find a way to make the maximum class size 22 for the second grade. That's what we're asking the Board to do. And, you know, we understand the reasoning and everything behind it, but educationally, that's the best for the kids. Right, so we're asking the Board to please reconsider and make the class size 22, the max, right? If it has to go across, through all the elementary schools, so be it. Right, but this is what our request is, that you take that into consideration and do that, and find the money to do so, through breakage, breakage, or by whatever means. Would the Board be willing to do that, and talk about it, and take a look at it, reconsider?
Let me just explain to you a little bit about the breakage. You are correct that when teachers leave and new teachers are hired, there's a difference between what we pay new teachers and what we pay experienced teachers on the top of the guy. We do refer to that as breakage, and typically, we generate between $600,000 and $800,000 worth of breakage a year. But that breakage is also calculated in our surplus calculation that is carried over from one year to the next to deal with unanticipated cost increases in one area or another. So it's not as if, oh, that breakage is unaccounted for. We do ensure that we count that breakage as part of how we determine what our fund balance is going to be in the subsequent school year.
I guess the problem is that I have, and an understanding is, when we talk about money, and then we talk about children. We talk about what's best for children, and then we talk about money again, right? What I'm asking this Board to do is to find a way to maybe reconsider that, to bring the class size down to a max of 22 again. I, I understand everything you're saying, but my difficulty is kids and money. Budgetary considerations and money. And I'm asking you to get over that and to try to find a way.
I mean, I'm happy to push it to committee, both education and, and operations, but I, I hear, I hear what you're saying with regard to, you know, forget about budget, don't worry about the money. Unfortunately, we have a, we have a responsibility and a, and a, and a mandate to do so. So we would have to make choices, and that is, that is going to take a lengthy process. The budget cycle is the, is the best time to do that, but we, we will take, we can take that into consideration, and we have to determine where are we going to cut? Because it's, it's, as far as the budget is concerned, particularly for the 14, 15, it's, it's going to be a zero-sum game. So, so, you know, thank you, you know, I hear, I hear what you're saying. The situation is, is not unique. It's unique to Woodfern this year. Throughout the past years, when this transition has been made, it has, it has happened at other schools in past years as well. It's, it's the, it's the nature of, you know, what year that occurs, whether it's second grade, third grade, but, but we hear you, and we'll, we will take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Hello again. Nine Upper Neshene Court. I wasn't intending to speak again, I was just going to sit here quietly and all, and so I, but I just had the urge to stand up again and speak. Now, again, I'm going to make it clear, I don't have, I'm 20 years old, I don't have any children, okay? But I've learned, my parents have taught me, money doesn't grow on trees, okay? That's just the simple fact. Money doesn't grow on trees. We can live in a fantasy world where we want, you know, things to have, you know, be done our way, or we, we want, and I agree with these parents, that 22, if the studies are, are, you know, concurrent, and they, you know, that a smaller class size is better for the development of children, then, yeah, I agree. But we don't have the money. As I've brought up several times before about the, the funding formula and the Supreme Court of the State of New Jersey, I would suggest to all these parents and to parents out there that will watch this once it's put up on the local TV station, you know, contact the governor, see about contacting the Supreme Court or doing something, because you guys, your hands are tied. You can't do anything. You need the Supreme Court, and you need the governor, more, not, not even as much the governor, but you need the Supreme Court to overturn Abbott, so then you can bring in more money. You only have a limited amount of money, and with the, the budget that we just went through, there was a lot of hell because of all the, the idea of privatization and possible cuts and reductions here and there. Your hands are tied. I mean, I don't envy what you guys are having to go through, because you don't, you can't get any money. So again, my suggestion is, I agree with what the parents are concerned about, but I suggest that you go, you call the governor's office, you somehow, I don't know, if there's some phone call for the Supreme Court or phone number, call then, see about being active that way, because you guys can't do anything. So, thank you, and...
Thank you.
Just real quick, I just wanted to reiterate that this decision has a long-term effect on kids K through three. Please consider that as you are reconsidering this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have an additional statement and additional question. So, Dr. Schiff, you mentioned that it was, over the last several years, been, there's been budget cuts, which has forced us into this situation, correct?
There were significant reductions in our state aid during the 10-11 school, actually before I was superintendent here, and the decision was made to make reductions in almost all areas, I think, but teaching staff was one of them, and class sizes were increased in second grade.
Okay, so, because there's, there's data out there that shows that Hillsborough has received an increase in funding over the last several years. You were even quoted as saying that you were pleased to be receiving a 7.2% increase for the 2012, 2013 school year. I know that probably doesn't get it back to the levels it was at before, but it looks like there's more money coming in, so just, that's a statement. And the question would be around, the discussion earlier around making a change for all the schools, and I believe, Mr. President, you had said that this is a, a problem that's currently limited to Woodfern, so my, I'm sorry?
No, I'm, the, it's, this specific scenario is what Woodfern is experiencing this year, and other, other, other schools have experienced the same issue in previous years, when they made the jump from first grade to second grade because of that difference in the class size. And whether it's first grade to second grade, if the situation was second to third, and whenever you have, whenever you have one, one class of a lower amount going to a next year for the higher amount, there's, there's that possibility that because of the total number of students, one year maybe four, and it may be three the next, or five and four. So it has happened at other schools, just by the nature of the difference in the, in the class sizes.
Okay, so my question would be, if, if the data does show that currently Woodfern is the most impacted, if the policy is changed that would impact all schools, if there's a way that, it seems to me, based on what we're talking about now, Woodfern may be the only school that needs to hire another teacher, based on what we're all saying here and based on what you have provided to us in information. So maybe the policy can change and have the teacher only added to Woodfern, the other schools may not be impacted even though the policy would be in place.
Yeah, that where we have the clarification. If we did change that policy, I believe four schools would be impacted.
What you're suggesting is that any school that has to reduce a section from first to second be waived through the class size, and those other schools that don't go down a particular section would, would be kind of held harmless because they're...
Essentially, yeah, the policy can change, but if they have a lower number of students, it's, it's possible that they would not need to make any changes. Woodfern would benefit from it just based on the conversation.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I do want to address something that you said about the 7% increase. That, that is true, that I, I was quoted in the paper saying that. However, I think it's important for the public to understand that stated was reduced by what percent? It must have been close to 30, 20, something percent?
20%.
Went down $5 million from 25.
Yeah, $5 million from 25, so close to, close to 20% reduction. We received 7% increase off of a 20% reduction.
Not an increase, we're still catching up.
And we, we haven't caught up from where we were in the 10-11, I'm sorry, the 9-10 school year in terms of state aid.
And the past couple of years have been a fraction of a percent increase in state aid.
Thanks for the clarification.
We reduced by 60 staff members that year, 40 of whom were teachers. So the impact of that, that was 5% of our entire operating expenses, throughout the entire state, by the way. That had significant impact across the entire district, and we're still working to try to get to the point we were five years ago.
As previously echoed, I think we're on the easy side of the podium here, so we definitely do not envy the position you're in, but we thank you and we ask for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we comment on this? Mr. Drab? Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to reiterate a couple of things that I said at the previous meeting for board members that weren't here and also maybe new public. And I'd like to start by saying that personally, my value is the same as the value that the parents from Woodfern and across the district hold. I prefer the lower class size. But as I said at the last meeting, from my perspective, it's not just talking about class size maximums at kindergarten through fourth grade. It's also talking about average class sizes from the, across the district, and a de facto minimum class size. Because almost all of our grades, K to four, across the, across the district, have either three or four sections in them. For each maximum, there is a de facto minimum. So in kindergarten, first grade, when we have 22 maximum, there is inevitably 16, around 16 minimum, before you, you jump up to, or add a teacher, or, or remove a teacher, and then go up to close to 22. So that makes the average in that, in those grades around 19. That's something that the Board values, an average of 19. In second through fifth grade with the 25 maximum, there's about a 19 minimum, because there's three to four sections, that's just the way it works out. So you either have 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, or sometimes 25, but the average is around 22, which we have some numbers in front of us provided by Dr. Schiff and his staff today, I believe, that, that indicates that. So we're hitting the sizes that we want on average. We want, now, you could argue second grade, maybe we'd like to go a little bit lower, and we could, we could definitely talk about that, but we're hitting around 19 for, for younger children, 22 on average. But because we've, and this is why I said the last meeting, because we have a school district that has six elementary schools, all kindergarten through fourth, spread around the district, sort of, you know, neighborhood-type schools, you end up with some at 16, some at 22, some in the middle. That's how, that's how it ends up. If we wanted to put one school just with kindergarten kids, one with TP, one with first grade, one with second grade, one with third grade, one with fourth grade, then we could act, we could hit our exact average at every school. We could have 19 students in every class in first grade in every section in that one school. But we don't do it like that. So these are the trade-offs that we have to make. If we were to lower it down and say we have a maximum of 20, then we have to be prepared for a minimum of something like 14. That's pretty low. And so I just wanted to tell you where I'm coming from, and I think, I don't know if it's for the other board members, but our values are to have that smaller class size, but we have to think about it as an average across the district, at least that's how I think about it. The other thing is, and maybe Dr. Schiff could think about this also, is that when we say there's a teacher in a classroom and it has, you know, 20 students in it, I don't know, are there any K to four classrooms in our district where there's a single teacher in that classroom with the full amount of students for the entire day? In any, whether there's push-in teachers for either the whole or part of the day, whether some students have an instructional aide present, whether children are coming out for special education resource room, whether other children are coming out for what we used to call basic skills, I guess ASI now. I don't think the, the model that the public might be thinking of where, you know, Ms. Crabtree is in front of the rows of desks with the, with the 25 students is really accurate. We have, we've put so many resources in to our special education resource, I think what they call push-in teachers, which are there for maybe one subject or a couple of subjects, and also kids going to, you know, out for resource or out for basic skills, we put our resources into that. So when we look at the class size, we get ratios of, you know, averages of 19 or 22, and I know I'm going on here a little long, I apologize. But when we look at other metrics, like our teacher-to-student ratio, because we include all the certificated teachers, whether they're in the classroom or not, like our, our resource teachers, our, our basic skills teachers, it's much lower than that. So I think we're providing those resources also. And as Dr. Schiff said, one last thing from being the finance person here, Finance Committee Chair, we're not up to our state aid level that we were in 2009. We're still not up to that, and that becomes difficult every year. I don't know if we'll ever get there. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flouette. Tom? Mr. Paul Sefor.
I'd like to add to it first, I would agree with Greg, and I think the Board as, in general, yeah, write this one down, Greg. You know, we're here because we want to do the best we can for our kids, and we recognize that some, that issues like class size have a direct impact. If you asked all those people who did those studies about class size to do studies about school funding, I don't think any of them would have come up with the school funding system that the state of New Jersey has. But going back to the, the one father was talking about separating the kids from the money, we don't have that luxury. As a Board of Education and as this administration, we must handle both sides of that equation, given the, the financial constraints of, of that budget cut, but also when you add on the 2% tax levy cap, every year, not only is our funding still not getting back, but we're losing ground to that cap because of costs that we can't control that cost us more than that 2%. So every year, we're losing ground. This year, I don't know if you may have heard, you know, we've discussed during our, our budget discussions, that our healthcare premium increase for the coming year, that alone is larger than our 2% cap, you know, the, the allowed growth based on the 2% cap. So that one item is costing us more than we're allowed to grow. So while we would all looking at just the kids and education, I think we all agree So while we were all looking at just the kids and education, I think we all agree that small class size is sort of a no-brainer. But at no point in our evaluation can we just say, this is a no-brainer, we must do it. We have to look at the entire equation that we operate under and the environment that the state funding creates for us. And that's the catch-22 for us, the rock in the hard place, is that we want to do that, but at the end of the day, we have to find money somewhere. And when we're losing ground every year to these other influences, saying just find the money is a pretty hard thing to do. We're trying, but it's very hard to do that.
This is my first board meeting. I'm not sure if I'm overstepping my boundaries or not by coming up a third time, so I just wanted to respond back on the record in regard-- I'm sorry, Mr. Pulsifer.
Mr. July.
I'm sorry. In regards to your comments around the model, you know, the model in the schools that Hillsborough has, I didn't want to-- I almost misconstrued your statement as a justification based on the model, but I just wanted to-- that model is not unique to Hillsborough, right? I mean, the model you propose is, or that you talked about is really--
No, you're right.
--is all schools. So that almost comes out of the equation, and because every school has that same model. If the classes are bigger here, then it becomes relevant.
I agree. I think there-- I think a lot of schools are struggling with the same issues also that we're struggling with. That'd be my response to that. But I don't disagree at all. You're right.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address what that gentleman said about all of these economic conditions that are causing you to be in the position that you're at. I get it. I definitely get it. As a result, you know, you have to sometimes trim the fat or off a budget, or you have to make decisions that are difficult pills to swallow for us parents, but not this one. This is that one, that decision where that affects academic achievement, okay, especially kids K through three. In fact, I could even-- I would even get yelled at by some parents where I could even swallow increased class sizes for the older kids, but not the critical ages K through three. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-uh. No. No more.
I'm sorry, I just, you know, I don't know.
Let's make it brief, please, unless it's something new.
Yeah, I'll make it very brief. Just any cut or any reduction will hurt somebody, so it's never-- no cut or any reduction really concerning schools is ever an easy choice, that's all.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Nobody's weighing in.
Okay, we're going to the action agenda.
Thank you.
Dr. Schiff?
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses. We have investigation lists. Approve curriculum as reported out of committee as well as textbooks as listed. Approve the stipends for the Princeton Quest Connect Ed 2014 Summer Institute. Approve the stipends for the 2014 Earth Wash participants at Hawk Mountain and Light and Life in the Bay. Also, approve the teachers participating in the quote "you and me in the PLC" unquote Summer PD Institute. Approve teachers participating in the Workshop Model Institute for the dates listed. Approve school nurse to collect medications for the band trip. Approve submission for the district bilingual ESL three-year program plan. Approve curriculum writing. Approve the teachers participating in the Next Generation Science Standard Summer Institute. Approve the summer work as listed. Approve science common assessment development. Approve overnight trip. Submission of fiscal year 2015 IDA grant. Approve added district placements as listed. Approve field trip destinations.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A20 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dana?
Dana?
Dana, gotcha. Okay. Any discussion? I have a couple of questions. On the travel, we would love to get feedback on the various great conferences that administration and staff attend, so if we can get updates on that, at least in the Education Committee, what was learned, what's going to be taken, you know, what's going to be adopted and those types of things.
Sure.
Any others? On the approved curriculum writing, item A12, under hours per person, it says not to exceed X number of hours at a rate. Is that total number of hours for a specific content area, or is that per person per content area?
Per person.
So for example, in World Languages 7 through 8, where you have three people, that would be 90 hours of curriculum writing.
Eight.
Two people. Chinese, there's two people.
No, World Languages, grade 6 through 8. Chinese would be, there'd be--
Five.
Oh, there's two names each. Okay, so 60 hours.
Yeah. Are you on 612?
I am on A12. So World Languages, 7 through 8, there would be 60 hours required. I realize that there are two names, not three. 60 hours. When was the last time that some of these have been refreshed? Because I thought we had a big influx a couple of years.
Remember at Education Committee that we talked about the transitional curriculum for World Languages because of the introduction of Chinese? So we have Chinese there, that's new.
Yeah.
And then we have the transitional curriculum for those students who just started taking it into going into 7th and 8th grade, so we have to transition that curriculum. So that'll happen for several years until we fully implement the Chinese language.
I understand the Chinese piece, but the other languages for which we already teach--
Same, because the students are choosing their language now at fourth grade, so yeah.
It's that one and a half thing that we were talking about, right?
Right. And I recall when we talked about the implementation plan a while ago, that that was an issue that was highlighted, that it was an extra burden to make those transitions, and the decision was to make it every year to do that. Okay. And then on item A16, the overnight trip, in the description, there were no costs that were listed. So is there-- are we to assume that the board is not providing any costs, it's going to be provided by the participants?
That's exactly what the application indicates, zero cost.
Okay. I just-- I'd said maximum per something and--
Zero cost, that's what they wrote.
Thank you for that clarification. That's why I thought, I just wanted to confirm it. Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mumud. Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. July?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending for the board's consideration under the area of human resources to approve the retirements as listed, the resignations also as listed. And I do want to recognize Mr. Eckert, our Assistant Business Administrator, who sits at this day, who is leaving us to become the next Business Administrator Board Secretary in the Randolph Public School system. So we wish him very well. Also, Christine Smith, who is currently our 12-month Vice Principal at Otten Road Intermediate School, will be the new middle school principal in Spotswood, New Jersey. And we're very excited for both of them as they are promoted through their career. Wish them all the very best. I'm also asking the board to approve the motion to-- for the Acting Director of Special Services and to approve Mary Beth Loughlin for up to 20 days if necessary while Mrs. Landon is working as our director. Approve the extra payments as listed. Rescind the contracts of the listed employees to approve the revised contracts as listed, to approve the change of contracts, as well as the transfer and change in assignments. Approve a reappointment of a non-tenure first-year teacher. Approve the revised leaves of absences and leaves of absences as listed. Approve the appointment, which we did already, 12.1, Kathryn Warlick as our new Director of Special Services. Approve teachers as listed, nurse, personal aide, instructional assistant, coach, parking lot attendant, long-term substitutes, student teachers. Approve revised summer work. Approve summer work hours, as well as approve the extended school year program salaries. Approve the authorization of the superintendent to hire personnel over the summer. Approve the resolution pursuant to Superintendent Miracles. Approve policies for second reading, including victim of domestic or sexual violence, employment of teaching staff members and employment of support staff members, outside activities of teaching staff and outside activities of support staff, professional development for teachers and school leaders. Also approve the revised unaffiliated staff salaries and approve the resolution for benefits for the unaffiliated staff. Approve the resolution creating new budgeted World Language positions, as well as create the new budgeted special education teaching positions. Approve chaperone payments to instructional assistants. Approve extra period coverage. Approve the high school fall coaches for the 2014-2015 year and approve the interim assistant superintendent for personnel.
I'd like to entertain a motion for items B1 through B25 excluding item B12.1 of the action agenda.
So moved.
All right, second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'm going to separate out item B24.
24?
I have a son who's--
You sucked my battleship.
Who's the high school fall sports guy, so. Okay, any--
I'd say bingo. I don't think 24 is under B, so.
Okay. So this motion is now for items B1 through B25 excluding B12.1 and B24. Gotcha. Got it. Roll call please, Mr. Mumud.
Judy.
Oh, sorry. Judy?
I wanted to separate out a couple of other things.
Oh, sure.
Um, hang on, hang on. I have some questions, and I'll ask them. I'd like to separate out, I'd like to separate item B17.
Okay.
I would like to separate out B19.2.
Oh, boy.
And I'd like to separate out B20. And I'd like to separate out B24.
Okay. Gotcha. Number one.
We're making up for last month.
I'm sorry, B25, sorry.
Last month, we separated 9.
25.
Approve the whole agenda with one vote.
Okay.
Right?
All right, so this is for items B1 through B23 excluding B12.1, B17, B19.2, and B20.
Yep. Yep, I'm with you.
Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mumud. Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. July?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B17.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
This is an item to approve the authorization of the superintendent to hire personnel. We've had this discussion before, and the discussion was that the superintendent has the right to hire personnel. The part that I object to is the verbal approval of Board of Education members as opposed to a formal recorded roll call, majority vote of the full membership. I believe the superintendent has the power to do this without board members being involved in that process, and I think we should follow the law on that. Humorously, policy 3125, which is that B19.2, has been changed because the old policy, which is on our board website right now, states that very specifically, the superintendent may appoint the person to fill a sudden vacancy, subject to ratification by the board at the next board meeting. In the new policy that we're also approving tonight, it does not say that anymore. And it just says that the board shall appoint, transfer, remove, or renew only upon recommendation of the superintendent and by a recorded roll call, majority vote of the full membership. So the policy has changed. I'm not sure why. I assume there was a change in the law. But under any set of circumstances, there is no law that states that the superintendent should get the verbal approval of two Board of Ed members prior to bringing it before the entire board. So I would take out that language, or actually just do what we did, I think, last time this came up, and just table the resolution because it's moot.
We came-- we talked about this last year.
In my humble legal opinion.
At the same time of year, I think, right before the summer.
Let me just share the rationale for having this on. The board meets twice typically during the summer, once in July and once in August. And people are at the final stages of their hiring process. They may be looking at us, they may be looking at other districts also. There are times when they have job offers in two or three different districts. And if we needed to wait two to three weeks, four weeks at times in order for the board to act on it, we would lose candidates.
That is not what this says. What I'm saying is that you have the right to move ahead and make those offers pending our approval as a board, not as individual members of the board being individually told before the rest of the board gets a shot at it. And the bottom line is, it has always been the policy of the board, and the law, I believe, that arbitrarily and capriciously, people may not withhold their support of your recommendation.
Yeah. From my standpoint, I just want the ability to offer the contract, have them sign on the dotted line, commit to us for at least 60-day notice, and not-- and we don't lose a candidate because of timing, which has happened.
You have that.
And then that would be fine with me.
So just to clarify, you can have a start date 60 days from when he offers, not when the board approves?
I'm not hearing what the point--
There's a difference between approving-- it gets to timing. So you can make a decision, he can make a decision to hire somebody, but depending on how-- and I think there was something in the policy about a sudden opening that he has the ability to fill. These are not sudden openings, these are known, these are known openings, so the question is, he may have a need to act quickly, but the position is not suddenly open.
But the issue is still what the superintendent's responsibility is and what the board member's responsibility is. And board members are not supposed to administer the school district.
Yeah, I have a question, maybe to that point. So I think maybe Mrs. Haas's objection, and maybe mine also, if I start thinking about it, is not in the positive where the human resources person, maybe it'd be Chris or the board president, where they're affirmative. But what happens if they are negative? Because upon their approval, what if the board president says no? That, I think, would really contradict the purposes of the board. And besides the fact that he's allowed to do it anyway. So I see where, I see from Dr. Schiff's point of view, where it's nice to get, it would be helpful to get the heads up from the board president, the human resources chair, to get, you know, to get the nod. But what if it was, what if they said no? You know, what if, we had a big discussion a few months ago, in the spring now, about an interim person, what if this interim-type person came up in the summer and the board president was like, was vehemently against it? Not you, but maybe a future board.
Or me.
Or him.
Or Tom.
Or that guy over there. And they said no, and that would sort of usurp the role of the board. Is that what you, is that kind of what--
I'm saying whether they say yes or no, it is not the board member's purview to approve or disapprove a recommendation in the personnel area that is made by the superintendent. And as far as 60 days or whatever, if the superintendent offers a contract to somebody without the board approval, there's still the choice of calling a board meeting. And the second choice, if you think it's at all controversial, call a board meeting. And if not, then go with the trust that the board's going to approve your recommendation. I can't remember in nine years the board turning down any teacher hires.
Sure.
Honestly, I mean, if somebody else can, go right ahead, but I don't remember when we've ever turned down a teacher hire.
Right. And what I have done in the past is that any administrative hire, we wait until a regular board meeting before the contract is offered.
Well, as I said, I think this mostly comes up in situations, somebody's on, all of a sudden they're on disability, whatever it may be, and you have to hire an interim, it's during the summer, you want a nod so that you feel comfortable with it, but I think that that might be, you know, that might be problematic. Let me use the word problematic in this case. So I kind of, I'm rationalizing a way to agree with Judy, which is not easy to do for me.
You're just very agreeable tonight.
Yeah. Let me use the word problematic in this case. So I kinda, I'm rationalizing a way to agree with Judy, which is not easy to do for me.
You're just very agreeable tonight.
Yeah, well, it's easy for you to agree with me, but hard for me to agree with Judy.
Hey, what can I tell you?
I have to rationalize it.
What can I tell you?
But I do agree with you. I, I think that he has, I think you've got, he has, you've got the power.
Well, as long as there's transparency that what I'm being authorized to do is offering contract to a potential employee without formal board approval, then I'm, I'm fine with that. If that is not what, what the direction is from the board, you'll, you'll need to give me clarity on it. So there, there needs to be some formal action, I believe, taken in order to empower me to offer a contract. Cause here's how it works. Board approves, the people that you just, that you will approve shortly on it, we off, we call them in, give them their contract at that point, cause the board has authorized us to do that. The problem is in the summer hiring and the timing of it becomes cumbersome. And this is how we've, this is how we've operated over the last three summers that I've been here.
So again, the process is, it goes up and then once they act and the contracts go out, what, what he's, so what I'm hearing is, within his purview is that he can actually offer contracts to people without our approval.
Yeah.
And then it's, then it's a retroactive-
He's still doing it without the board's approval. He's doing it with two members of the board.
It's still without approval.
The last time I voted.
July 22nd, 2013. We approved motion to approve authorization of superintendent to hire personnel. So we did approve that on July 22nd.
But does it say with-
That's the agenda. I'm happy to withdraw.
Was this your suggestion? I'm sorry, Ms.
It's not, but I can, all right, we'll get confirmation on that.
Yep, I'm doing it right now.
Well, I, I need to know if I have authority to hire over the next, you know, three, three and a half weeks.
We're consulting the record right now.
And our next board meeting is until-
July 21st.
July 21st.
And we have two retreats where you don't wish to take action on that.
I don't want to take any action at that.
Yeah.
We should keep those pure. No action.
How many open positions do we actually have? There's a seven-page personnel agenda here.
I think we have, we have about 13.
Motion to, upon called or the motion carried and so recorded.
Fifteen to 20.
So the motion for personnel was carried out. We didn't separate it out. We, we approved it with all of the other meetings.
Just for the record, this motion was presented last year.
July 22nd.
And it was approved unanimously.
It was approved last year?
Yes.
In the same wording?
Same, let me look at the wording.
How do we change the wording? Now we had this conversation, we gave them authority to hire, but I thought it would change the word.
Yeah. I mean, Neil Hughes came here and objected to this.
That's Judy's contention.
Let me take a look. Gotta make it work.
What meeting was that?
July 22nd?
It was later last year.
The July meeting we were doing this?
Let's go, let's go.
Can?
Can? I don't wait, must have been the beginning of that.
Can't find it, where do you do?
Lost it.
Can we go on?
Yeah.
Let's go on.
Here it is. Uh, here is, uh, upon the motion superintendent to hire personnel for summer months, upon verbal approval from the board president and chairperson, even also, the motion for approval of personnel will be brought to the board for ratification at the next scheduled meeting.
Yeah, it's the exact same wording.
Exact same wording.
Okay, we approved the last year with the same wording?
It's the exact same wording.
I remember the discussion.
And does the record show Neil Hughes coming here to speak against this issue?
I don't know, I don't remember that. Did he come? Maybe that was two years ago.
That might have been two years ago.
That might have been two years ago.
It said this was violated by the board.
All right, well, listen.
There was no comment, Tom, after that motion.
All right.
It all got a vote.
And just to also clarify, before, when I was in Reddington, these were the powers that, that the board granted the superintendent when I was in Howell prior to.
No, no.
They were-
But I think you have those powers, but I, I think, I think the objection is, should it be contingent upon the board president or any other single or duo of board members giving you the go-ahead? Does that, does that usurp the board authority?
But would this be an appropriate caveat, that if there was hesitation or concern expressed by the board president and/or by the chair of the HR committee, then that appointment would have to come to a public board meeting for approval?
You could ask for an emergency board meeting if you had to. Get five people to come.
I don't think this rises to the level, I mean, there's statutory requirement, there's statutory requirements as to what justifies an emergency meeting. I'm not sure that hiring a teacher would be-
No, no, but not an emergency, so I, I spoke incorrectly. So a week in advance board meeting, where, where the board meeting isn't coming up for four weeks, we get one within a week, uh, subject to the noticing requirements. Something like that. I mean, is that what you're looking?
That, that hadn't happened, you know, just to put into context in the past three years that we've been doing it, it's been pretty smooth.
The context for me would be any two members of the board being able to approve, and let's take it out of the context of personnel. If, um, something operationally, if somebody decided that, you know, with Greg's approval, we could move ahead with transportation contracts or with, um, you know, my approval, we could move ahead with curriculum. I think that gives individual board members authority that was not granted to them under the law.
No, but here's, see, here's the thing. We should just, I'm sorry. Uh, I, the, the board, the board president is always in, uh, contact, not always, but is, is in contact a lot with the superintendent. So they're in contact anyway. And I don't know if human resources chair is also in contact, you know, all the chairs are in contact. Just formalizing it maybe, you know, they're gonna, he's gonna ask him anyway. Hey, this is what's coming up on the agenda and if you throw up a red flag and said, hey, I think we should have a, a board meeting to approve that, then throw up the red flag. I don't think it should be done on your approval.
Okay. Fine to withdraw it.
Anybody?
I, I'm wondering, I, so what's your, what you're asking for Judy is, Dr. Schiff needs the approval. Um, so can we approve this and just extract the, upon verbal approval of that to the end of the first sentence?
No, what Judy's, what Judy's saying is that he has, he's empowered to do so.
You could either withdraw the item or withdraw the wording, but, you know, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I would feel more comfortable withdrawing the wording. I would disagree that I, that I'm empowered to offer contracts prior to the board's public approval unless the board authorizes that, that authority.
That's contrary to the way things are done, so I'm fine approving it without that wording. If that makes Dr. Schiff more comfortable.
So agreed, so if I, if I'm, if I'm hearing, approve the motion to authorize the superintendent to hire personnel during summer months. The motion for approval of personnel will be brought to the board for ratification at the next scheduled board meeting.
Yep.
So noted or so amended?
Sure.
Do we have to vote on the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. First, let's have a vote to amend the motion.
Well, it's the motion with the amendment. We'll pick one vote for, for-
Thank you.
I, I, I move, we already, already had a motion.
The motion's on the table.
Okay, with amended. As amended.
As amended.
Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B19.2.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion with you.
I guess my question is, why was that particular part of that, uh, policy changed? But it's apparent, nobody has the answer, so we'll just deal with it on the assumption that Strauss has made the duck.
Yeah.
Based on revision of law.
Yep. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B19.2.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll start. Um, we have spoken for years about equity among unaffiliated staff salaries. And looking at the list of staff salaries among the unaffiliated, I'm seeing some glaring inequities. And I'd like to know when and how they are going to be resolved.
I reported on that. Well, I, I, I reported in operations, um, report, um, that as far as the ones that deal with central office staff, um, Dr. Schiff is gonna present a proposal for an outside expert to, um, you know, do a study for us about inequities in salary efficiency and the whole range of central office staff. There are a few outliers on there and you know what those are.
If we know what they are, what do we need to study for?
School psychologists that were, that have been here since before the, the, uh, the reorganization of what area school psychologists are in. I assume that's the one, one of the ones you're looking at. See, I didn't have it in front of me and I, I still memorized it.
Okay, but does anybody on this board have any idea what cost those kinds of policies have because I, um, professionals have? Because in my experience, the cost of those kinds of reevaluations are like $50,000.
If it's $50,000, I'm gonna vote in committee for no.
Well, yeah, so then we're still not solving the problem, but yet, we've had full-time personnel people, we've had several interims at this point, and I would think a personnel professional should be able to do classification to the extent that there is equity among people who are doing the same level of work in an organization.
It is definitely what's HR, you're negotiating with HR.
Silence.
Well, I'm just waiting for them to finish. Uh, if I could add, this is something that also came up in the human, human resources committee as we've discussed. Some of the, the people coming and going and with their salaries were, I think, a big part, and, and we've talked about this in terms of, um, not just the unaffiliated, but even in some of the other positions at district, about paying for the job and not paying a salary based on what somebody used to make somewhere else, where else. To get more to the equity and, um, we're, we're dealing with quite a few years of history that kind of got us here and we're, and we're trying to reconcile a lot of those. But the other thing is we have to be careful about where people are and not penalizing people for things that are out of their control. So we're looking at, how do we figure out how people should be paid? And I think this is part of why the discussion about having somebody from the outside come in, because a big part of, I think, the areas where we see some of these issues are things that are almost more, uh, in my view, business functions and not education functions. I mean, I believe our administration is perfectly well-positioned and, and prepared to make those kind of evaluations, but we can't take that same approach, I think, to our business operations people. We need to have somebody come in who actually understands that aspect of how we should be, not just what we should be paying, but what staffing should, uh, from a business perspective, how many people does it take to run, uh, uh, the benefits organization for a company with 1,100 employees, how many, whatever it is? I mean, those are things that really, in some ways, have nothing to do with education. We have 1,100 people and we have a benefits plan that they're part of and we need to administer that in some fashion and whether they were teachers, engineers, uh, whatever, those aspects are business functions, not education functions. And I think we've missed the boat historically on viewing them that way and trying to build out the appropriate levels of staffing, whether it's higher or lower than what we have, and establishing the appropriate salary ranges and, and a guideline for how to do that. So, um, that's why we've been talking about that. I don't think we have a concrete because I think part of, as you say, I mean, if it's $50,000 bucks, I don't know if we want to.
Yeah, this has been, this has been raised among the board. It's been addressed specifically within the HR, both in general and for specific positions. Uh, and specifically for this motion, this is the recommendation by the superintendent for, um, for the sal, for the salaries of the unaffiliated staff, 2014-15. So, I'd like to call a question.
We actually had somebody come in several years ago and did a study that subsequently disappeared from the face of the earth. Um, that was supposed to reevaluate at least top management positions. Nothing ever came of that. And to look at a, you know, a, a large group of people?
I-
I don't know what can be done at this point.
I called the question.
Yeah, let's, my expectation's gonna be less than $10,000. The proposal would be less than $10,000.
That's my expectation too.
Okay, just, just to, just to clear up the $50,000. And, um, as far as this motion, I think we should go ahead and vote on, on, on the salaries.
Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Oh, we need a motion in this second.
Oh, we have, got you, go ahead. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to entertain a motion for item B24 of the action agenda.
So, so second?
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. Discussion, Tom?
I don't have any discussion.
She, she misnumbered.
Oh, okay. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
I'm staying.
Motion passes.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for item B25 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Here we go again. That's the level of my discussion. Um, I'm not in favor of another interim super, assistant superintendent for this position. Um, with all due respect to Dr. Bowen, um, the bottom line is, um, there's no specific personnel background that I see. Um, and I don't see why in the month of July, when most people who would be present among the senior staff would be using to take their vacation time, which is over 20 days, why we need to establish, um, another interim position? This is really out of hand. I just, you know, I looked at the tasks, you know, as far as I'm concerned, a lot of these are clerical tasks. I don't know why they haven't been done already. We already had, over my objection, an interim in this position. Why are all these tasks still remaining to be done during a month which should be the slowest month of the year? If our incumbent is truly coming back, um, at the end of July, I don't understand why we have to go ahead with this. And there are three other people in that office who can do that.
And this is for replacement, for somebody who's on family leave, who is not receiving compensation, so there's not issues of double payment.
Well, I have a question about that. Does the incumbent get a new round of leave allotments as of July first?
There would be additional sick days that they would be entitled to, but no vacation days at this point.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sick days, yes, vacation days, no.
No, I thought vacation days were allotted on, you know, the beginning of the year.
He has, he has taken those days already.
Next year's allotment has already been taken.
That has been a longstanding past practice within the district.
Okay, so then the concept, which I think was presented here, that this is a limited cost because we're not paying the incumbent, is not exactly accurate. It's that we paid the incumbent already, and now we're gonna pay somebody else.
I also have a question. I thought we had a person in here for a few days, so, yeah. So, what, what did he do and part of which piece that's not covered, that, you know, what did he do versus what that person didn't do that you're paying the person? And why can we not have the same person?
One thing I think that's, yes, that's very important for the board to be aware of. I itemize six or eight major duties that are responsible. I can give you the job description so you can see all of the activities that this particular position is responsible for. We have been without an assistant superintendent since April eighteenth. The board authorized eighteen days for an interim in between that particular period of time. It is very important that we have the appropriate complement of leadership in this district to maintain the quality of the work that we do here. And, you know, I appreciate the concern, we need it, it's, it is very important for the effective operation for the district. I can, I can give you the job description, but frankly, if we, to have this extended period of time without executive leadership in the area of HR for an organization that employs over a thousand employees compromises our ability to do the work that our employees expect us to do in the area of personnel. And as I've indicated in my communications to the board, I'm very, very concerned that without additional support, things are already becoming problematic, they will only get worse. There is a reason why this district appointed an assistant superintendent has had a person in that position for as long as I've been here, and even years prior to that, whether it was called an assistant superintendent or something else, there was always leadership in that particular area. We have been out, we have been without leadership for months now. We need help.
Roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Well, if we're going to put interim people in positions, I would like them to have expertise in the area that they're going into. And I see superintendent experience, and it's of course very nice to have an experienced additional superintendent around, but it would be nice to have somebody who could do a classification study as well, which to me is like Personnel one oh one.
I've, I've had an opportunity to interview him as a superintendent in both small and large districts. He has had direct experience with the HR functions, is highly competent to do so, and I feel very comfortable making this recommendation.
Thank you. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, continuing on with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Under the area of operations, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions: to approve the monthly financials, the bills list, line item transfers, resolution authorizing the execution of a lease purchase agreement with US Bancorp for the purchase of transportation vehicles, as well as the resolution authorizing the execution of a lease purchase agreement with US Bancorp for the purchase of the Chromebooks, to abolish policy thirteen forty, to approve the revised policies for first reading, which is sixteen twenty, and that's all I have.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C one through C seven of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Judy, Mrs. Haas?
Yes, I'd like to know why our legal bills have been going up month after month after month.
Well, they have been going up. We did, we, so I'll report that we, the business office did, transferred some money to increase the appropriation. As you know, we appropriate a hundred twenty thousand dollars at the beginning of the year, and we draw down from that. We came up about two months short this year. We did that, and we're gonna probably have to do another one, because we have four thousand dollars left for the last month in June, and I don't, I expect June to be more than four thousand dollars. It's been, this month alone was over ten thousand dollars.
Over eleven, thank you.
Oh, yeah, over eleven, right. So, we, we, we would like the average to be around ten thousand dollars, that's what equals a hundred twenty thousand. There's a lot of things on there which I can't discuss, which I don't think we can discuss. But in general, if you, if you, I don't know what you're saying, I mean...
I'd like there to be some control on it.
Yeah, some control would be good.
According to our policy, it's supposed to be controlled.
Well, I think we have, we do have controls, the, of the, the people that are allowed to call the attorney, that they're limited, not everyone in the office obviously can call the attorney. So, that's, that's one control. They've changed the way they do their bills, so it's more...
By department.
By, by their department, is more itemized, you see, yeah, it's changed, just in the last couple of months. So, you see, if it's, if it's, if it's, Vic is looking at it, Vic, is that it?
Vic.
I know, that's his name. Or, you know, Mr. Fogarty, or whatever, or clerical staff of, so it's itemized who's getting these, who's doing this work. So, that's a little more, I don't know how that, you know, if we can do some study, if that helps control things, I don't know. We can see who's getting the calls and who's doing the, you know, how they're charging, because every, every level of their staff charges a different amount of money.
Yeah, then the next level reviews the work of the previous level.
That, that, I won't deny that that sometimes happens.
You might think this is nitpicking, but the sum total of everything I've brought up tonight would have paid for the new teacher out at Wood Fern.
Well...
Keep going.
Then cost us elsewhere.
I'm done.
All right.
Roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson? And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. I'd like to open up the floor to the public, second opportunity for public comment. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jean Trujillo again, at Five Eric Court. Thank you, Ms. Haas, for your comments for the Wood Fern parents, I'll be glad to share it with them. As a member of the public, I was actually, I don't usually come to the board meetings, so I was actually very interested to hear the discussion among the board members, and I was actually a little bit surprised to see that with most of the motions to approve and so forth, there was little discussion or debate, except for Ms. Haas, who questioned the administration's, you know, roles, or questioned the amount of, how much things cost. I was surprised at the, perhaps this is done in closed session, but I was just surprised that the other members of the board did not ask questions of the administration. And that's partly my concern as to what happened with a staff member, that questions weren't asked when there might have been an opportunity to save a good teacher's position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, HEA president, resident of Sixteen Laurel Drive. I had a question for the board regarding policy nineteen point three, the outside activities one. My question was with regards to number three, about not endorsing, supporting, or assuming liability in any way for a staff member of the district who conducts a private activity in which students or employees of this district participate. My question was how that would impact programs like Girls on the Run, which are not necessarily district-funded, but do have staff members working with students during that time.
That's actually a legal question. We would need to contact our attorneys and get back to you on exactly what the liability would be. Wouldn't want to speculate at this table unless we had clear indication from our, from our insurance carrier what the liability would be for a teacher that is not doing a board-authorized activity.
Okay. Thank you. Second, and I...
We'll get clarification.
Get clarification?
Yeah, we'll get clarification on that. I know that, I know the, the, one of the, one of the primary points is for private, so for example, if a, if a music teacher has music lessons outside in their, in their private room or something like that. So, but that's, that's a great question, we'll get you clarification on that for things that happen on campus. All right, any new business from board members? Dr. Wasson? Or old business as well?
It's, it's old and new, we haven't discussed it. I was going to say something at the last meeting, but we were so rushed to try to fit in what public comment we could. Ms. Haas and I had the great pleasure of representing the board at the senior awards ceremony, and it was quite impressive. Over seventy-five thousand dollars in awards was given out, given out in addition to a two hundred fifty thousand dollar scholarship to West Point for senior Aaron Moore, and the staff did a beautiful job. It was a very, very long ceremony, which Karen promised at the beginning, Ms. Aaron promised at the beginning, but it was well worth the time spent there to see the seniors get their awards. And, you know, they'd called twelve of them up on stage, and they wouldn't know what they were getting, and then they'd hear the description and go, oh, that's you. You know, they were all very, you know, joyful for one another as well, so I just wanted to, to say, well done, and, and for other board members to try to attend next year, and it's a plan on four hours.
Thank you, Dr. Wasson. Any other new or old business from the board?
I went to Flag Day at HES, and as usual, it was, it was great, it was awesome. What they do at HES is they invite veterans and active service members who are somehow related to the kids, their grandparents maybe, or dads, or moms, cousins, and they come up and they get to say a little something, the kids, the kids introduce them on the stage, and we get to sing your grand old flag, two choruses of it, and the kids play their recorders with patriotic medley. It was a lot of fun.
And I don't, I don't...
I have one more thing.
I've got one more thing, too, but...
I was also able to attend the eighth grade class trip to Gennesberg and Hershey.
My condolences.
So, I spent a lot of time with thirteen, fourteen-year-olds, my minions, and we watched Despicable Me Two on the bus out there. And, you know, this is my second time on the class trip. I went two years ago with my older daughter's class, and I was impressed then, and I think I'm even more impressed the second time around, knowing what I was in for and really seeing all of the preparation, and so many teachers going on the trip, and really, you know, trying to impart educational lessons about the Civil War, at the dance, educational lessons about appropriate ways to act, and, and then again at Hershey. And, you know, so I really do applaud Mr. Gill, who, who runs the trip, Dr. Trubisky and the middle school staff, and thank all of the chaperones who made the trip possible because they, they really do need to fit a quotient. The only thing is that they promised me Barry Manilow was gonna play on Thursday night, and I fell for it hook, line, and sinker, so...
I remember...
I was singing Barry Manilow for twenty minutes on the bus, and nobody stopped me, but it was great, so, thank you.
Yeah, I guess in one of the communications, it was Barry, not, or Benny, Benny Manilow instead of Barry. Has anybody talked about, from the last meeting, I wasn't there, about Les Miserables? Okay, so I just...
I was gonna bring up, Les Miserables was at the high school.
Les Miserables was at the high school, and a couple of weeks ago, it was with the HHS Performing Arts, and also with the New Jersey Intergenerational Orchestra. Very innovative format in terms, you had the orchestra, it was doing the musical score, and then you had students, alumni, and staff performing, singing. It was a great event, my kids loved it, they loved seeing the singer, lead singer from Fiddler on the Roof singing a different part, I think that was him, but it was just, it was, it was fantastic, and having the staff and the alumni, it was, it was remarkable. Innovative format, too. So, you know, kudos to them, to continue to raise the bar. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.